Is everybody nice and cold today? Beautiful day in Rancho Mirage. Good afternoon and welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council meeting for Thursday, February 21st. This council also serves as the Library and Observatory Board, the Housing Authority, and the City Council representing the Redevelopment Successor Agency. So now it's time to call the meeting to order and Councilman Townsend will lead us in the flag salute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, next in order here, we have a presentation and...
Mr. Mayor May.
Sorry, we'll do a roll call first.
Okay.
Is that okay with you, Kristi?
Of course.
Okay.
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
I am here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
And I'm here too. Okay, well now move on to presentations and we have Alyssa Randolph from the, who was the tournament manager for the ANA Inspirational. So Alyssa, nice to see you.
Thank you so much for having us today. We appreciate that and look forward to a great 2019 ANA Inspiration. But first, before I kick into our presentation, I wanted to first say thank you to the city of Rancho Mirage and also the city for being great partners to this event. And without the city and the city of Rancho Mirage, this would not be possible. So, thank you. All right, so I wanted to kickstart and see if maybe not everyone in the room or the city may know what the ANA Inspiration is. So let's talk about that first. So the ANA Inspiration is golf's first major on any LPGA Ladies Professional Golf Association or PGA Tour. So Rancho Mirage is the first start for golf. And with that first stop, 120 top-ranked female players in the world from 20 average of 20 different countries come to compete to be the ANA Inspiration champion. So entering into its 48th year, what a great year and milestone that is as we are approaching our 50th year anniversary in 2021. We just celebrated last year our 30th anniversary of the famous first jump into Poppy's Pond by our past champion, Miss Amy Alcott. And since those 30 years ago, this leap has been an iconic tradition. So you may have seen this leap in the famous 18th hole, iconic women's golf hole in the world. And last year, if you didn't get to see it or watch, our champion, for the first time ever, jumped into Poppy's Pond on Monday. So Sunday was the final round and Monday was the day following the final round because she went into an eight-hole playoff with NB Park, World's Number One, and also Jennifer Song, and had to finish in the dark on Sunday night and came back up and teed it up on Monday morning. But in the eighth hole, Pernilla clinched a putt on number 10 to make that iconic leap into Poppy's Pond. So here we have pictured Miss Pernilla Lindberg. So I wanted to touch a little bit today. Out of the 120 players that play in the ANA Inspiration, five of them are very special. So back in 1972, when David Foster and Dinah Shore created this event together and what it's turned into today, Dinah Shore's vision was that she wanted to have amateurs an opportunity to play and compete in this elite event. So with that said, we want to honor these amateurs that come here and capture that history and vision from Dinah Shore. So I wanted to highlight before we get in today our 2019 amateurs. Who has played in the past as an amateur in the ANA Inspiration? So a few of those are Michelle Wie, the current 2018 Women's British Open Champion, Georgia Hall, Lydia Ko, Brooke Henderson, Canadian, Born and Bread, Nellie Cordera, and Morgan Pressle, just to name a few. So in 2019, we are welcoming five amateurs. Number one is Miss Frida Kenholt. She's a freshman at Florida State University and the number one Swedish player in the world right now on the amateur, World Amateur Golf Rankings. She also is Swedish with Pernilla Lindberg and said she wants to follow in Pernilla's footsteps. Second, we have Alban Valenzuelas. She's the number one Swiss, uh, Swiss player in the world for amateurs and also is a junior at Stanford University. Third, we have Miss Patty Tavitanica. She's a junior at UCLA and also competed in the 2017 ANA Junior Inspiration, which I'll get to here in a second, and the 2017 ANA Inspiration. She was the low amateur for the U.S. 2018 Women's Open. Rounding those out, we also have Miss Rachel Heck. She was crowned Rolex Player of the Year 2000 champion for the junior players and will be competing in also the Junior Inspiration the week before. So rounding out our five amateurs and making the event even more special than it already is, ANA came to us five years ago and said, "We want to take this..." It was the Fresh and Easy and then it, with Amy Alcott, and then it became a Southern California State Golf Association qualifier. And both great partners to us still to this day. And they said, "We want to take this event and glow it, grow it globally." So they said, "How can we do this?" So now this event has become into an official 54-hole, also in conjunction with the American Junior Golf Association. So this gives 48 junior girls from around the world a chance to compete in the final round in the Junior Inspiration for the last exemption spot into the ANA Inspiration. So what a cool experience. And to add more icing to the cake, as pictured in this photo, we have past champions, 24 past champions and legends that come back to foster mentorship from the past game and give that mentorship and help grow the game as present for the juniors. So as you can see, this is one of the best photos that we have from the 2018 event. Our junior champion, Miss Rose Zhang, jumped into Poppy's Pond after her win with Patty Sheenan, who was our 1996 champion, because Rose was a little timid to jump in by herself. So Patty said, "Come on, I'll join you and let's take a dip." So this is Patty and Rose. So again, this event is held the week in prior and we invite everyone to come out and join us. It's free admission on March 31st, which is the Sunday, the final round of the ANA Junior Inspiration, and you can park right on site and join us. All right, in addition to joining us at the Junior Inspiration, we have several different tickets that we offer this year. One is our grounds experience, so you can come and walk the hallowed grounds of the Dinah Shore Tournament Course and follow all of the players. But also you get free access to our 18th green grandstand, which is pictured right here. It's packed because it's debatable, though one of best seats in the house overlooking the 18th green and also 10th tee. You also have free access to number one and 10 grandstand, as well as one of the toughest par threes coming in the stretch number 17 green grandstand. So again, all of those are free to the public with a grounds ticket. Second year, this is still somewhat newer. So we have, last year we launched this. It's brand new where you get to come in and experience not only the grounds, but it, let's say you want to relax and take a break into the cool atmosphere inside the clubhouse near the players, this is the ticket for you. So F&amp;B will be provided. It's in the Champions Bar and Grill and on-site parking is included. And last but not least, we have our 18th green suites tickets. And this is the best view and best seat in the house overlooking the Poppy's Pond, one of the most recognized golf holes in women's golf, the 18th green. And you have food and beverage, VIP parking and valley parking and come on down. So our gates open Wednesday, April 3rd, and we round out on Sunday, April 7th. And you can visit ANAInspiration.com to purchase tickets. In addition, we have an autograph area, so it's not just golf, but if you want to get a few of your favorite signatures from players, this, what a great photo as well. Lexi Thompson stayed around last year to give her biggest fan a pair of signed golf shoes. So that all takes place in the autograph area. New to this year as well, and we're very lucky to have such great partners here in local Rancho Mirage. Babes BBQ and Brew House will be supporting us, as well as Highmark, who will be bringing on Golden Road, La Quinta Brewing, and Four Peaks into a beer garden that's just next to the clubhouse. This is exciting that our spectators can join us with that. And in addition, we of course have our concessions that are located throughout the property on Dinah Shore Tournament Course and right in Spectacular Village to accompany your beer. Before I end, I just wanted to also excitingly announce, and I know a few people know this, but for the very first time with this, with this event, are the president and CEO of All Nippon Airways, who is our title sponsor, will be attending the event on Monday, April 1st through Wednesday, April 3rd. So exciting time for us and for him to be able to see this event that was actually his idea and he signed the initial agreement with the LPGA and IMG to have ANA accompany the longest LPGA event. And then in addition to that, ANA announced last year at the tournament with Mike Wan and Golf Channel that they extended their title partnership through 2022. So we will be celebrating that this year at the event as well. And then last but not least, coming up in the next few weeks, to kickstart our 2019, on March 5th, we will have our Media Day at Mission Hills Country Club and our 2018 ANA Inspiration champion, Pernilla Lindberg, will be joining us. So we look forward to having everyone out at this year's event. And if you don't want to come out and you want to stay at home, that's okay because we have 20 hours of live coverage on the Golf Channel, where the number one most-watched LPGA event on the Golf Channel, non-major and major. So feel free to join us on Saturday and Sunday. We are from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. and that's Eastern Standard Time. And Thursday and Friday in Eastern Standard Time as well is from noon to 3:00 and 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So look forward to having you view or come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Is there any questions from the council? None. Alyssa, how about having the mayor jump in the pond at the end?
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, that's okay. Love to have you.
Okay.
Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay, well now move on to non-agenda public comments. This is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda and we would hope you would keep your comments down to three minutes. And we would also ask that you would fill out one of these yellow request forms so we can make sure everybody gets to speak. So the first individual today will be Robert Mueller.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Mueller. I'm a resident of Rancho Mirage and as I mentioned before, I'm greatly appreciative to speak to you today regarding solutions for the Salt and Sea Challenge. I've extensively studied the current and likely future of the Salt and Sea and I must say, the picture is rather dire. In recognition of the, of the concerns of the future for, for the Salt and Sea, Rancho Mirage has actually hosted at least two forums on the subject at the Rancho Mirage Library. The good news is that the counties of Riverside and Imperial County are collaborating on potential solutions and an MOU has been drafted and will be, is being circulated to every one of the city councils in the valley. It will, if it hasn't come to your attention by now, it certainly will soon. The reason for speaking to you today is to ask the Rancho Mirage City Council to consider adding an addendum to this MOU, which would include the importation of seawater from the Sea of Cortez. There have been three engineering proposals that have been submitted actually to the state, one of which includes water desalinization. So this kind of a solution would be very helpful in alleviating California's freshwater availability challenges. The cities of Palm Desert and Desert Hot Springs have endorsed the amended MOU and Palm Springs is actively studying it in one of its commissions. So we're asking you to consider, please, an MOU, in addition to the MOU, rather. I have hard copies, but I think you may already have them at this point. I'll leave them with the clerk just in case. So thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Feliz Sitz Nunez. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Feliz. I'm a retired registered nurse and very concerned about the Salt and Sea. As you all know, the fish are hardly down to anything, the birds. Just about two weeks ago landed and a bunch of them died just getting their feet into the Salt and Sea water. A lot of money has gone into the study of the Salt and Sea, how to save it. And apart from that, you know, it seems like there's not enough being done to, for a long-term solution. And that's why I agree with Mr. Bob Mueller to have this clean water being brought in, clean water being put out, which would also go in agreement with a Colorado river that to provide water to several states in the United States and Mexico. And this would be beneficial for everyone. The state has already agreed of about three proposals, engineered proposals, GEI and binational. And, and we would really want some serious attention to be brought to where these proposals are started to put into action. And as I said, you know, I'm very concerned about the environment because in that is included our properties, our tourists and our visitors that come to the Coachella Valley. And above all, of course, the health of humans is already in critical situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Chuck Parker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I am grateful to have the opportunity to talk with you this afternoon. I'm a resident of Bermuda Dunes and I'm also grateful to be a patron of the Rancho Mirage Library. And I want to thank the council for its role in establishing and maintaining that wonderful center of learning. Like Bob, I have attended two meetings there concerning the Salt and Sea and both times the big room was filled to capacity. So I know a lot of people here are concerned about this. As far as this MOU is concerned, it, it has three main proposals. One is for the construction of a north lake, which is a small wetland along the north shore of the sea. The second one is a financing district to raise money to pay for it called an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, or EIFD. And I provided you guys with copies of the MOU. And the third is a perimeter lake, which would be to add more narrow wetlands on the south end and eventually going all around the lake. Our Salt and Sea Coalition supports these projects conditionally and are primarily concerned that there isn't enough water to complete them. And for that reason, we believe that they've left out this important amendment to take into consideration the importation of ocean water, either from the Sea of Cortez in Mexico or the Pacific Ocean. I don't know if you have already seen a resolution. It's being sent around by the Salt and Sea Authority to all the cities. If not, when it does appear, we would ask you to consider our friendly amendment. The plan cannot succeed without more water than is available. Ocean water would be the only source of enough water to make this happen. Our amendment was adopted recently by the Palm Desert City Council and I've included a copy of their resolution. I didn't have time to highlight our amendment, but it's at the bottom of the second page. And it's a little different from our original wording in that the second half of the sentence, they add the words that they would like them to study or assess this plan and then incorporate it into the long-term solution. The state's management plan is, is required to adopt a long-term plan by the end of this year, so we think that this is timely. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead.
So just for the, the council's benefit and the three members that spoke on this item, the city council did approve a resolution of support of that MOU between Riverside and Imperial County. And we approved that on December 20th, 2018. Staff will do the research for this amendment and we will follow up with the council as necessary.
Great. I think we're certainly all interested in the future of the Salt and Sea, so. Is there anybody else who would like to speak that has not turned in a request form? Okay, with that, we will close the non-agenda public comments and move on to city council comments. And I'd like to start the comments today and just mention to all of you who missed the Valentine's Flood Day, that Public Works has put together a brief presentation that I think will, you'll all enjoy and get a better feel of what it was like out there on Thursday, Valentine's Day. We had a record rain in the valley, as most of you know. The entire stretch of the Coachella Valley Whitewater Channel and all the roads that cross the channel were put to the test. In Rancho Mirage, Frank Sinatra Drive was shut down on Thursday and Country Club Drive also required a shutdown on Thursday. Public Works crews worked long hours to get the roadways open as quickly as possible. Minor damage was sustained to both Frank Sinatra and Country Club Drive, but repairs will be made over the next couple of weeks. A permanent solution to the flooding is planned by the Frank Sinatra Drive. The Frank Sinatra Bridge is currently under design. The bridge is being designed to meet the standard roadway requirements and the unique requirements for placement within a sandy waterway. The city is actively working with the Coachella Valley Water District, Caltrans, utility companies, and an engineering team to finalize the bridge design that meets all these requirements. The new bridge will eliminate future road closures due to the channel flooding. I want to thank the Public Works Department for giving up their weekend to make sure our streets were operational. Their dedication is so much appreciated by all of the community. Thank you, Public Works. And would you guys stand up? Really appreciate all the work you guys do, not just for the, the flooding, but for just the day-to-day operations. Do a great job.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can add on to that, you know, Rancho Mirage is, is known for our beautiful community and our well-maintained streets. And the guys that you see standing here today are the ones responsible for that. So thank you guys for all your hard work. When we were hit with this rain event, they came in and cleared our streets so that we could get them operational again. It was long, hard work with shovels, trying to get the streets back open and clear of debris. Even our Public Works Director, Jesse Eckenroth, was out there with a shovel with them, trying to get our streets back open for use by the public. So thank you guys for everything you do for our city. It is very appreciated and your hard work is noticed by everyone. Jesse, would you like to say a few words to the guys?
Yeah, I would. You guys, please have a seat. It's because I want to have you stand again. So absolutely, the, the day-to-day operations that make this city beautiful, it's an attribute to the hard work that you guys put in. So Camilo, would you stand up? Camilo's going to be out there running the water trucks on all these road closures. There's a bunch of mud and debris on the road afterwards, so Camilo's going to run the water truck and, and clear that up. Roger Manning, would you stand up, please? So we have a big loader. Roger is the go-to guy for all of our equipment, so we have big loaders, dump trucks.
Roger is a big loader.
So he fits very well, very good on the equipment. Joel Castillo. Joel is, is very versatile all around. He was out running the skid steer on Country Club to clear up the debris and he's just an all-around excellent hand. Noel Chicos was out there doing all the detail work all day long. Noel never stops. It's very hard to keep up with that gentleman. Thank you for all your hard work, Noel. Matt Reynolds. Matt Reynolds is our signal technician. So not only did Matt get to help us and get behind a shovel and equipment, but we had a signal go out during the flood too. So Matt got to get to, he got to break off and go fix a signal in the middle of us trying to open the roads. Trent Moyle. Trent got to join Matt when he went out to try and fix the signal. Both of these guys were there all day with us behind the shovels and then we had to send them out to grab equipment, fix the traffic signals, so very much appreciated. Justin Ruberg, our street supervisor, he's out there organizing the crews, the equipment. We had to get a dump truck to come in, obviously on short notice. We have repair work that I believe is scheduled for Monday right now to, to repair Frank Sinatra. So Justin coordinates all that. Thank you very much, Justin. Dave Martin. So Dave is facilities and fleet manager and Dave does everything. We could not operate the department without Dave. Dave is out there with a shovel in hand. He can work every piece of equipment out there, but he gets right in there with the guys. Thank you very much. We appreciate your guys' hard work and next time it happens, we'll be out there again. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, guys. Okay, back to work. Get out there in that snow and sleet. Okay, well now continue on with the city council comments and go to Charlie.
Well, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm never short for words, but on this point, I'm going to pass and save everything for next time. Thank you.
We can hardly wait.
Thank you. Keep in tune.
Okay, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. The 2020 Rancho Mirage Writers Festival may be a year away, but we are pleased to announce that an exciting lineup of authors has already been lined up. Two of our keynote speakers will Two of our keynote speakers will be nineteen-time New York Times bestseller James Patterson and Pulitzer Prize-for-History winner Doris Kearns Goodwin. In addition to the amazing lineup of authors, the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival, in conjunction with the Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory, will be opening over 200 additional reader seats. Secure your seat by purchasing your pass on March 1st, 2019, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Put it on your calendar now. March 1st is almost here. As in years past, passes will be available online only. If you need assistance, please call our library at 760-341-7323, or show up in person, where our staff will be ready to assist you. Don't miss out on our world-class Rancho Mirage Writers Festival. For additional information, feel free to visit our Writers Festival website at www.rmwritersfest.org. Look forward to seeing you next year at one of the great events in the valley. I have another item, Mr. Mayor. Should I do it now or wait and just?
You're more than welcome to do it now.
Come back when everybody else is done.
Now that you're hot, go ahead.
You can take my turn, Dana.
Okay, this is what Charlie would have said. You may recall that last September, the council voted to approve the placement of an AT&amp;T Wireless Decorative Clock Tower on the grounds of the Westin Hotel. The council's motion required AT&amp;T to move the planned tower from immediately adjacent to many homeowners in Mission Hills to a distance further away, but still on the Westin property. AT&amp;T reviewed the change and has filed a notice of acceptance of the better-balanced location. While this is exciting news for the Mission Hills community, we have to keep in mind that the council has previously approved four wireless facilities within the Westin complex, but none have been constructed. That's zero out of four shots. This time, we added a bonus of $20,000 if AT&amp;T gets this site built within a year from that council meeting. We will continue to do everything we can to get this project underway and completed. In just in the last 48 hours, AT&amp;T has filed the final development plan with the city. The planning department has reviewed and approved their final development plan, which means AT&amp;T can now pull building permits. We hope that this continues and that we soon have that problem solved with the residents happy and with the visitors to Mission Hills happy and the people driving by having finally a better ability to have contact through their iPhones, cell phones. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great news, Dana. We've waited for this for a long time, and certainly the residents of Rancho Mirage are going to benefit from this addition. So hopefully, it's just the first in many that will be constructed in the future. So moving on to the next comments. Ted, what do you have to say today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Biannually, the Coachella Valley's desert landscape becomes home to several unique art installations. The Desert Exhibition of Art, better known as Desert X, brings the finest international artists to the Coachella Valley. The art embraces a range of ecological, environmental, and social issues. Your creativity and inner soul are put to the test, and believe me, are they ever. For example, John Gerard, the Irish artist known for his digital simulations, has brought a massive video screen outdoors. The work "Western Flag at Spindletop, Texas" depicts the world's first major oil find, while a flagpole spews an endless stream of black smoke. Yes, indeed, your imagination is tested. The art installation sites span from Palm Springs to the Salton Sea, engaging visitors of all ages. Rancho Mirage is the host for two Desert X installations. The first is titled "Sarogets" by artist Imman Issa, located at Sunnylands Center and Gardens. "Lover's Rainbow" by artist Pia Camille can be found on the west side of Highway 111, south of Rancho Mirage City Hall, and across from the atrium. As a matter of fact, when we come to City Hall regularly, we see people walking out there from City Hall or across 111 to view this work of art. Parking for "Lover's Rainbow" is provided across the street at the atrium or here at City Hall. Desert X 2019 art installations are open to the public, free of charge, now through April 21st, 2019. Our very own Rancho Mirage Cultural Commission will be holding a free Desert X bus tour, April 6, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Cultural Commission does some amazing projects. Join members of your community for an all-day guided bus tour with lunch included. Online registration begins Saturday, March 23rd, at 10:00 a.m. at the library's website at www.ranchomirajlibrary.org. The website again, www.ranchomirajlibrary.org. Don't miss out on this wonderful experience. Desert X follows the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival and adds another cultural dimension to Rancho Mirage and the Coachella Valley. The Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory are truly becoming the cultural center of the Coachella Valley. We are very fortunate to live in this extraordinary city that provides the depth and variety of cultural and educational experience. You've heard about the 2020 Writers Festival and a preview of what's coming, and we continue to grow from a cultural standpoint. So we're all quite privileged to be a part of it. It's exciting, and I hope you take advantage of the bus tour to see this wonderful, wonderful exhibit. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ted, the bus trip sounds great. How much is it?
How about zero?
Zero cost is good. Okay. Sells out quick because of that.
Absolutely nothing, Mr. Mayor. And again, it's another example of what the Cultural Commission and what we try to do for our residents here in the Coachella Valley, along with the many events at the amphitheater and so forth. It's an endless variety, and we're just blessed to be able to provide it.
Thank you for your comments. Iris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We saved the best for last, huh?
Well, I hope so.
Okay.
One is, they're both short. Okay. So on the evening of January 15th, Emmy-nominated actress, director, and producer, Miss Cheryl Hines opened the 2019 Rancho Mirage Speaker Series at the Helene Galen Auditorium at the Annenberg Health Sciences Building at the Eisenhower Health Center. Miss Hines is most recognized for her role as Cheryl David on the Golden Globe Award-winning series Curb Your Enthusiasm. And Miss Hines was as funny and charming as she is on the show and had the audience captivated with her stories of breaking into Hollywood, her role on Curb Your Enthusiasm, and her life in the Kennedy family. Those who attended the VIP speaker's reception had the opportunity to meet Miss Hines, as well as her husband, a nice surprise when Robert Kennedy Jr. showed up, and both of whom were very anxious to pose for photos and engage in conversation with all the attendees. And guests were treated to delicious food, wine, and dessert provided by Aqua California Bistro, and enjoyed the lovely sounds of harpist Lynn Lockwood. So I would like to take a moment to extend a huge thank you to the speaker series commissioners for their contributions to the speaker series and for the amazing lineup of 2019. So if you missed Miss Cheryl Hines, there's still tickets available for our next two speakers, Dr. Drew Pinsky on February 26th and Elizabeth Vargas on March 26th. All you have to do to purchase tickets, it's very easy. Go on the website. It is rmspeakerseries.com. That's rmspeakerseries.com. And it's very easy. If you need some help, all you have to do is call City Hall, but we look forward to seeing you all there, and we look forward to another wonderful season. Thank you. And the next item is a note in regard to something that our very creative city marketing team has created. It's a vintage postcard featuring iconic images of Rancho Mirage. These postcards are available here at City Hall, the Library and Observatory, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, or at the Rancho Mirage Chamber offices, and they are free of charge. Pick one up, mail it to your friends and family, and just let them know what a beautiful place you live or visit. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Iris. And every once in a while, you're wandering around town, and you run into people, and they say, "Well, there's nothing to do in Rancho Mirage." Well, I tell you, you can do something 24 hours a day, and I'm just going to talk about one more of those items, and that's the Fourth Annual Music in the Park, which begins this Sunday evening with a performance of up-and-coming country star Jimmy Allen. He released his debut album Mercury Lane in October last year, and this album hit number one on the Top Country Albums Chart, featuring his breakthrough signal Best Shot that reached number one on the country play chart. In April, he will be performing at Stagecoach, but this Sunday at Rancho Mirage Amphitheater, you can see him up close, and best of all, it's free. This is the first of six concerts that will run on consecutive weekends from now until March 31st. The full schedule can be found on the city's website at ranchomirajca.gov. So grab a flyer here at the City Hall lobby, and don't miss this great performance and the ones that will be following up after him. And just one last note, seating for all the shows is first come, first served, with gates opening at 5:00 p.m. for the show beginning at 7:00 p.m. Food and beverages are also available for purchase from Aqua California Bistro. Hope to see you there. It should be fun. Thank you. Okay, that's the last of the comments. We can all go home now. Okay. All right. Steve, our city attorney, wants a few minutes. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a request that an urgency item be added to today's agenda. But before you take action on it, I have to explain publicly why it needs to be added on as an urgency item. So it came to the attention of the city attorney's office after the posting of today's agenda that there might be a possible breach of one of the city's imposed affordability covenants, which may create one potential initiation and litigation item that requires some direction from the city council before the next regular meeting. As such, I'm requesting that the council add the following: one potential initiation and litigation item pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. We just need a four-fifths vote to declare that this is an urgency item and that it be added to the agenda.
So do we need a motion to add it to agenda? Can I have a motion, please?
No move.
Is there a second? Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Steve, do we need to assign a number on that?
No. Make it the last one. Oh, no, it's a closed session item.
Oh, okay. All right, let's see now after Steve. We'll move to the approval of the minutes for the February 7th meeting.
I'm making a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
And motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving now on to the consent calendar, it'll be presented by our city manager, Isaiah Hagerman. Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, you have seven items on your consent calendar today for your consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is adoption of ordinance number 1145, which adds provisions for residential beekeeping to the Rancho Mirage municipal code. We do have a request to speak on this item, so I would request that the council would pull this item from consent. Item number three is two resolutions for two commissions. 3A is Resolution Number 2019-LB-Next-In-Order, creating the Library and Observatory Advisory Commission. And 3B is Resolution Number 2019-Next-In-Order, reducing the number of commissioners serving on the Community Emergency Preparedness Commission to five, removing the cyber-technical advisor position, and modifying the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. Item number four is a resolution adopting the investment policies pertaining to the investment of city funds. Item number five is a receive-and-file of the December 31st, 2018 Quarterly Treasurer's Report. For the quarter, the portfolio earned just under $454,000. Item number six is a receive-and-file of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, the CAFR, for the year ended June 30th, 2018, and all other related audit reports. And item number seven, our demands, and staff is here to answer any questions. And again, for item number two, we have a request to speak.
And Mr. Mayor, I would also like to pull item number 3B.
Okay, we're going to pull item two and item 3B. Do I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
I will make the motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we will now move to item number two. And Brad? Anderson. Got it.
Brad Anderson, Ferber Drive, City Rancho Mirage. I just thought of a couple of things I might add to the beekeeping, and one of them is probably transportation. I don't know if that's written in somehow. That might be covered by another ordinance of the beehives themselves. And maybe possibly the commercial venture that may take place. Somebody may want to take care of the hives or move them for pollination on different properties type of thing. That may be something to look into. And this is just a recommendation that possibly if you keep bees, maybe you'd want to put some kind of placard maybe on the fence to the property. And that's just for maybe, I know vector control. I'm very disappointed in that organization, but I know with the 80s Gypdi program they have, they will go in and do fogging, which they call a term fogging, and they would do that one properly, but they don't take precautions to look or notify the residents next to it. And possibly with a placard of some type saying you have bees, that may be a red flag. They may notice that, and maybe they would notify the neighbor if that was an issue. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you. Would you like to comment on that, Isaiah?
Sure. As your representative on the Vector Control Board, I- Sure, as your representative on the vector control board, I will follow up with the district to find out if the pesticides that they use are harmful for bees.
Okay, thank you. And Iris, you had a question on 3B?
I did. You know, I have worked very closely with the Emergency Preparedness Commission and the commissioners since I've been on the council, which is about seven and a half years, and we have a very, very dedicated and hard-working group of people on that commission right now. In fact, I don't think the commission has ever been better. And I know it would be probably very beneficial to have the commission number reduced to five members. However, I think there'll be a lot of people that will be very disappointed, and I think that one way that we can remedy a little bit of the issue might be to have amended this resolution so that the mayor would have the option to appoint two people instead of just one person. And that way, we would have six members, and that would be the option of the mayor, should he choose or she choose, to add that sixth person. If there was a voting issue that came up, as far as it being an even number of votes, then I think that could be remedied also by the staff liaison, who would be casting the deciding vote. So my suggestion would be to amend that Resolution 3B to include that the mayor have the option to appoint two commissioners.
To adding one, is that correct?
Adding one, right.
Yes, okay. Ted?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would be in opposition to that motion. I think it's a bad precedent because you then would have a situation where you would have the mayor have the opportunity then on other commissions to appoint two members to each commission. Each commission is very active, whether it's the Emergency Preparedness Commission or others. And I think it would be inappropriate for the mayor to be in a position to have two appointments versus the other council members having one each. So frankly, I would, I would find it objectionable to support that motion.
Okay, there's no motion on the floor right now. Can I hear a motion?
Before we do, I'd just like to say on this, I think we ought to give the commission a chance to work at the number five. If it doesn't work well at five and we see some need for an additional person, we can always come back and add it. That way, we don't have the precedent of giving one commission an extra person compared to the others. So what I would propose is that we not support the motion, but keep in mind that with respect to this commission, as well as any other commission for that matter, that we can keep an eye on it to see whether we really need a sixth member, and if so, at that point in time, deal with the issue. So I would, I guess I'm speaking against the motion, but on a temporary basis anyway.
Thank you. Charlie, did you have a comment?
No, I think it's pretty good to keep everything status quo across the board. Like my historical commission, we reduced it down to three, and that's been working very well also. So to give, as Ted said, and as Dana's point is, if in the future it proves that there isn't a reason to add one or two, or give that power to the mayor, then we can look at it then. Thank you.
Iris, did you have a motion?
I did have a motion.
And it read?
But apparently
To increase from five to six.
It was to increase the mayor's ability to appoint two members as opposed to one.
Is there a second? I see no second, the motion dies, and I will vote on item number two and item 3B. Can I have a motion, please, to accept those?
So moved.
If it is, yes, I will.
Just a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments, Iris. Okay, we'll now move on to the report and information.
You know, I think we should need to recall the vote because I did not vote, and I think we should vote individually on item number two, and then vote on item number three.
Item number two was the beekeeping?
Yes.
Okay.
So if we could vote on item number two first?
Okay. The motion is to increase, or what was the, there was no motion on item?
The motion is to adopt the ordinance, admitting chapter 6.7L.
On two.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
On number three, I would move that we adopt 3B. Motion is to vote yes on 3B.
Well, there's two, there's two letters, one is A, and one is B, so why don't we vote individually on those also?
We approve 3A with a consent.
Okay.
It works.
So then we'll vote on 3B.
That's what the motion is now.
Yes.
So which one are we voting on now? 3A?
3B.
3B.
3B. Kristi, would you call the roll, please?
Okay, 3B as originally stated, right?
Right.
Right, so we just need a motion, and then I can let you open the voting.
I think Dana just made that motion.
Okay.
Now I'll second it, as it stands.
Okay.
So would you please call the roll?
We need a vote.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, and motion carries 4-0 with Mayor Protam Smotrich voting no.
How does it be 4-0?
I'm sorry, 4-1, excuse me.
Exactly.
Okay, well now move on to item number eight, which is a report by Bill Reason from the Airport Commission in Palm Springs. Bill, would you like to come forward? Good to see you, Bill.
I'm sorry?
Good to see you today.
Oh, good to see you all. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the audience. I'm here to give you a brief update on what's going on at the, at the Palm Springs International Airport. I want to thank you for allowing me to represent you and the city at the, at the commission for Palm Springs International Airport Commission. One of the important things is the airline passenger traffic is continuing to increase. A year and a half ago, we reached over 2 million, and each year since then, the last couple of years, we've increased it even more, about 10%. So we're getting a lot of people coming to the Palm Springs area, not just Palm Springs, the whole, all of our area. The airport financially is in very good situation. All the revenues are up, all the sources of revenue are up, and it's kind of interesting, the largest source of revenue at the airport is car rental fees. The airport receives $10 per transaction on rental cars, and that amounts to over $7 million a year just from rental car fees at the airport. So it's pretty impressive. The proposed 2019-20 budget is being prepared right now by airport staff and the city, city staff, and it'll continue to be in excess of $30 million annual budget for, for the airport. Another thing, you may recall my last report to you a few months ago, we talked about the, the new California law allowing marijuana possession and use, and the big question came up, what about the airport? People can obviously bring their marijuana to the airport, it's legal in California, but they cannot take marijuana on an airplane because the federal law does not allow marijuana use. So it's a violation to have marijuana on your possession in, under federal law, and when you go through TSA and get on an airliner, you're in federal territory, therefore you'd be in violation of the federal law. So what we did in the commission is worked on establishing a policy on bringing and using marijuana at the airport, and getting on an airplane, flying someplace, no matter where it is, even if you went from here to San Francisco within California, it's still, when you're up there, you're in federal jurisdiction. So we came up with a policy, and we worked with the, with the city attorney, the city manager, the chief of police on, on all this, and we did come up with a policy on marijuana at the airport. And we'll have signs posted, and basically it says, you cannot take it on an airplane, even, even check baggage, because they'll find it. But on, on the airport itself, it's technically legal, but we recommend, the airport recommends that you don't bring it to the airport if you, if you have to, leave it in your car, leave it at home, whatever. So that is now, it is an established policy, and the, the airport staff will be putting signs out at the terminal, warning people, do not take marijuana on an airplane. So anyway, that's been a long process for the last couple of months, we did
Bill, can it be confiscated from them as they're checking in, or how are they handling that?
Well, it's my understanding, since what will happen when the TSA finds marijuana on your person or in your luggage, they will notify the local police, that's why we had the chief of police involved in all this. And it's very complicated, the, the police department doesn't want to really get involved in it, so we're at kind of a no man's land there, I'm not sure. So that's why we are recommending that you don't even bring it to the, to the airport.
Technically, you can be arrested under federal law by a federal marshal.
By federal marshals. TSA will, does not, is not considered a federal marshal, and so
But if they had one there, they could.
Yeah, if, if they had one at the
Have you ever, have you seen or heard or learned that there has been or has not been any federal marshals at the airport?
Not that I'm aware of. I don't know of any history that federal marshals have been there. And I understand some of the other large airports, Los Angeles as an example, they have, we, we pattern our policies similar to LAX's marijuana policy, and it just says if TSA finds it, they notify the local enforcement, law enforcement, and if they want to handle it, that's up to then, but it's not allowed on, on the airplane.
So they, so it can't be pulled off of them in line?
It can be confiscated, yeah.
By the people?
Federals.
Federals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Have there been any incidents where clearly people are smoking marijuana in the reception area before they board the plane or in the terminal? Whether it be here, or have you heard how it's handled at LAX or anywhere else, where clearly there is the odor of marijuana, people smoking prior to boarding? Has there been any admonition of any kind?
Not to my knowledge. Again, it's, it's legal in California, you can go into the airport lobby and smoke a joint if you want to.
You can't.
But?
Smoking marijuana is treated like smoking tobacco.
Whatever tobacco is prohibited
I'm sorry, yeah.
Marijuana is prohibited.
But what I'm, my point is marijuana is legal, where smoking isn't legal, I guess, but there's other forms of marijuana other than, than smoking. But to answer your question, Mr. Wile, I have no knowledge of any, any problems or situations that would cause a problem.
Excuse me, can I just make an addendum to your report, since it relates to the issue of marijuana, and maybe people are watching this program? We have a dog that has a very bad back and a lot of pain, constant pain. We had, we had heard from sources, and we have subsequently purchased from one or two of the marijuana stores in the valley. We've purchased the non-getting high, that component is out of it, but the rest of marijuana is in there, in the bottle that we buy, and we feed it to our dog with the food on a daily basis. And I can tell you that our experience has been, the presence of that marijuana liquid mixed in with her food has brought her a significant amount of relief. And I've heard from others who have had similar experiences, and I know it's not exactly part of the airport's issue, but I do think it's something that people would like to know about, and that's why I've kind of butted in on the loose tie-in to marijuana. Thank you, Bill.
Dana, you don't want to take your dog on the plane, though.
All I know, all I know is that she's laughing more than usual.
Very good, Richard.
Next?
That's enough of a marijuana issue. The long-awaited ticketing wing expansion is finally going to happen next year, and in the past, it was going to be a two-year project, but they have decided, or figured out that they can do it in one year, next year during the off-season in the summer. And as I mentioned several times in the past, it'll, it'll expand that waiting area in front of the ticketing wing. They've already moved the airline offices, which were behind the ticket booths, into an area underneath the Bono concourse, which, that's the main concourse upstairs where you, where you catch planes. They're all moved over there, they renovated the downstairs, which has been vacant for years and years. So that's the first phase of relocating the airline offices out and being able to move the, the ticket booths back about 15 feet and enlarge that area, because in this time of year, during our heavy season, it gets pretty crowded. If you, if you travel in this time of year, you'll, you'll see that. So anyway, that's good news. One, one other thing, the, the Air Museum, I don't know if any of you have been or to the Air Museum or anything, but it, I go almost every week, I'm a member. They, it is a fantastic facility, it's, it's considered the number-one air museum in California and one of the top 10 in the country. So anyway, one of the really exciting things that happened at the Air Museum last Saturday, and I was there, you've all obviously heard of the Learjet. The Learjet was developed by Bill Lear in, in the 60s. It was probably the first personal jet that came out. There's a guy in Van Nuys, Clay Lacy, you maybe heard of him, maybe not, but he was one of the first dealers for the Learjet back in the 60s, and he bought his own, he operates an aviation company charter and everything out of Van Nuys. He bought his own personal Learjet in about 1970, I think, and he donated it to the Air Museum last Saturday, and he flew it in personally, he's 80-some years old, and he flew his old original Learjet into Palm Springs, brought it into the Air Museum, and when it tax it in, the fire department had their, their big trucks with the And when it tax it in, the fire department had their, their big trucks with the water going over the top of it, the last flight of this particular Learjet. And just to give you that, Clay Lacy, he, he was, he did a lot of movies with, with his airplanes, mostly Learjets, but others, movies, TV series, commercials. And he, as, as a charter company, he flew a lot of movie stars, entertainers, all over the world. So he's a very, in my opinion, a famous aviator. So anyway, keep that in mind, Clay Lacy, if you ever heard of him. And speaking of the Air Museum, every Saturday, there's excellent programs. Most of them are, are World War II lectures, excellent presenters who tell stories and, not stories, but truth, history of mostly World War II, Vietnam, other, other issues, which is very, very interesting. I go every Saturday at 1:00 Saturday afternoon, if you're interested, take it in. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be certainly anxious to answer.
Any questions down here, down here at the other end? Any marijuana questions?
Bill, you always do such a great job in informing us of what's going on at that airport. And I do know flying over my house, there's a lot flying over my house, so there's a very busy airport.
I'm glad, yeah. We who live in, in Rancho Mirage, we're right under the final approach course to the airport, so we all experience overflights. And you've probably noticed in the last month or two and for another month or two, there's about three times more operations than in the summertime because there's so many people coming to the valley during, during the season. That's why, like I said, the number of airport, airplane operations coming in and out is about three times what it is the rest of the year.
Yeah. And tell them, I appreciate them when, when they fly over my house, that they turn off the engine, so it's appreciated.
Well, they don't turn them off. Maybe, maybe they're slumped back to almost idle because they're descending, yeah.
That's good.
Anything else?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the public hearing section of the agenda, item number nine. Do we have a comment from the city manager on that? Steve, are you going to do?
Yeah, so item number nine has to do with the proposed PDP regarding JP Morgan Chase Bank. And staff has requested that the council table this item to give them sufficient time to study it to determine whether or not a bank is the best use of that property. And a motion to table would take precedence over anything else, so you're not required to take any public comment on it.
Okay. We need a motion, please.
I would move to table the matter, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Please vote.
As the city attorney just added, my motion would be to table the matter with instructions to staff to study the issue and to report back concerning the best uses of that property and other potential uses.
Steve, do we need a date on that?
No.
No. It's a motion to table, it's open.
Okay. Kristi, did you get a vote on that?
Yes, I'm just waiting for Councilmember Hobart's vote.
You know, got a vote.
And motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now move on to the action calendar. Item number 10, urgency ordinance, next in order, electric scooter regulations. And Jeremy Kleim, Director of Development Services, will be the presenter. Jeremy?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. First up for your consideration is an urgency ordinance which would prohibit shared on-demand motorized scooters within the city. Let's see here. All right. So one of the more popular emergent trends in transportation technology is the concept of single-user on-demand mobility devices, which commonly take the form of electric scooters. This form of transportation is appealing, especially in highly urbanized area for a multitude of reasons, primarily because of the accessibility and convenience of these devices. From an operational standpoint, there is no central hub or docking station where users pick these up, so they can be left virtually anywhere in the city after their, the user has finished with them. So once you get to your desired destination or endpoint, you can just discard the device and somebody else will either pick it up and take it, or if it's still there when you get back, you can reuse it. Unfortunately, the things that make these transportation options so appealing to users in turn cause problems for local governments. Because what you end up with is a fleet of scooters discarded all around a city, both on public and private property, which oftentimes blocks sidewalks and ADA passive travel, that can also hinder ingress and egress from businesses. So, I mean, at the end of the day, it creates a public safety hazard. I'd like to also note that this ordinance, this proposed ordinance, would not prohibit the use of personal mobility devices. So if you own an electric scooter, you'd still be able to use it in the city. This strictly would prohibit the use of on-demand shared-type mobility devices. Before I conclude, I'd also like to add two recitals to this ordinance. The first one, and I'll just read them. The first one states, whereas California Vehicle Code Section 21225 provides that cities by ordinance may regulate the parking and operation of motorized scooters on pedestrian, bicycle facilities, and local streets and highways consistent with the vehicle code. And the second recital states, whereas California Vehicle Code Section 21230 provides that the city council can prohibit the operation of scooters on any path, trail, or bikeway the city has jurisdiction over. And so with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt this urgency ordinance with the additional recitals. If a favorable decision is made by the council by four-fifths vote, this ordinance would go into effect immediately upon its adoption. That does conclude my presentation, and I would be happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Jeremy. Has there been any use of these scooters in our city up to this date?
No, they've not been deployed in our city. And even if they weren't deployed in our city, there's potential for neighboring jurisdictions to allow them, which would potentially cause a user to venture into our city with them. So we'd just like to prohibit that as well.
So I understand that Palm Desert voted on this item and they turned it down? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. They've had discussion at a couple council meetings now, and in, in both instances, they have prohibited the use of these systems.
And we don't know if there's been any decision made by Cathedral City?
They have not. I reached out to staff there and they have not made any decisions on it. It's not been brought up for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Questions down here?
I do have a comment that the city of Rancho Mirage certainly doesn't have a layout or ground plan that would even blend to these at all. So that's my point on it. It's, it's kind of silly, in a way, using a very strong word for us to even to think about this in our city.
Great, thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? Go to the audience, is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for a motion.
All right. I will make the motion to the city council adopt ordinance number next in order, an urgency ordinance adding Chapter 10.57, shared on-demand motorized scooters to the Title 10 vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to prohibit shared on-demand motorized scooters from being, one, offered for use, two, placed on operation within any public property or public right-of-way in the city's jurisdictional boundaries. Based on the findings that the immediate adoption of the ordinance will immediately preserve the public peace, health, and safety by prohibiting an ordinance, no, a demand motorized scooter from being provided place, offered for use, or operated within the public right-of-way and public properties. And where are the two additions coming in here? Do I have to say those, or?
You can just reference what Jeremy said.
I will reference what was said by our illustrious Jeremy with that. How's that? Thank you.
There's a motion in a second, any comments or questions?
Yes.
I hope you guys don't come after my ice skates. Next. Is that in line?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some, I do have some comments. I, I found some very interesting information on the internet, and I would like to relate it to everyone. You know, in years past, when we were growing up, we had these great little scooters, and you could only go as fast as your little legs would carry you. But things have changed dramatically with the introduction of these new scooters. And I'd like to inform, you know, everyone about some information that I think you'll find interesting and also an eye-opener. Because Los Angeles, now, you can ride electric scooters in Santa Monica and in the city of Los Angeles, but they can't ride them through Beverly Hills because last July, the city passed a six-month ban on these vehicles from operating on their streets and sidewalks. But unfortunately, this ban has been greatly ignored because the city has impounded more than 1,000 scooters. And the West Hollywood City Council has also voted to ban the scooters. An attending physician at the emergency department of the Ronald Reagan UCLA Medical Center said that along with sprains and fractures, they're seeing more serious injuries caused by the scooters since their arrival in Westwood. We are seeing serious brain injuries, which are the kind of things we are typically seeing on motorcycles or bicycle riders. He added also that most people think of these scooters as toys, and it's hard for people to imagine that a brain injury can cause a rider to become a different person than they were before the injury. Information shows that thousands of helmets were offered by an e-scooter company. However, even with that offer, only about 4% of the riders wear helmets. In a new study released by UCLA Medical Center, found that one in three people injured in area scooter accidents will have a substantial impact on public health because their injuries were bad enough to require ambulance, transportation to, and treatment at an emergency room. Several of the scooter companies are also facing a class-action lawsuit about their safety that originated in Los Angeles. One attorney said that she had been contacted by hundreds of people injured on scooters, and studies found that rider adherence to safety rules are most often completely ignored. Consumers are now worried that the vehicles might not have reliable brakes, steering mechanisms, and operational interfaces. And something most people don't realize is that if a rider breaks hard, the front wheel can lock up, throwing the rider completely off the scooter. Public outcry against these vehicles has become so great in recent months that many suspect the scooters will be completely banned if proper safety precautions and regulations are not put in place and safety rules are not followed. Something so troubling about these scooters is that there is no training or instruction needed. You just download the app, enter your credit card, and off you go. Several Google websites detail many noteworthy and tragic accidents resulting from these scooters, and primarily the electric scooters. And while most cases are centered in Southern California, because Santa Monica serves as the unofficial birthplace of the trendy scooters, resulting hazards and injuries are present across our country and across the world. And according to some top-rated injury attorneys, these are just accidents waiting to happen. But the most troubling part of these scooters is that so many accidents with innocent pedestrians is that pedestrians, joggers, walking children are not equipped with helmets themselves. And so many of these accidents are like hit-and-runs. In fact, one woman at UCLA suffered a traumatic injury with a hit-and-run rider, and all he said was, "Oh, my bad." When she called the scooter company to track his whereabouts and his identification, the company would not give her the rider's name. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that gives us all a good indication of how dangerous these scooters can be and the impact it's having on our society.
Thank you for your report. Any other comments before we vote on this issue? Okay, there is a motion to approve item number 10.
And I, and it's been seconded.
Yeah, you're it.
Please vote.
And motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to the final item on the agenda today, item number 12, which is?
Eleven.
Did we skip over, oh, we're going to go back to 11, okay, I'm sorry. Item number 11 is companion ordinance and resolution related to the shared on-demand motorized scooters. This relates back to item number 10. So Jeremy, you're going to do the presentation on this again?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
So the companion ordinance contains the same information as the urgency ordinance content-wise, but would not go into effect until 30 days after its second reading should the council take a favorable action on it today. This item does, however, include a resolution which would introduce fees for the removal and impounding of these scooters should they show up in the city. And before I make recommendation, I'd also like to read those two recitals into the record that are being proposed to be added. Number one, whereas California Vehicle Code Section 21225 provides that cities by ordinance may regulate the parking and operation of motorized scooters on pedestrian, bicycle facilities, and local streets and highways consistent with the vehicle code. And the second, whereas California Vehicle Code Section 21230 provides that the city council can prohibit the operation of scooters on any path, trail, or bikeway the city has jurisdiction over. So with that, I'd like to recommend that the city council adopt this ordinance based on the content in the staff report and including the two recitals that were just read. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions, comments from the council?
Nope.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the city council introduce ordinance number next in order, first reading adding Chapter 10.57, shared on-demand motorized scooters to Title 10 vehicles and traffic of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code to prohibit shared on-demand motorized scooters from being, one, offered for use, and two, placed or operated within any public property or public right-of-way in the city's jurisdictional boundaries, and, B, adopt Resolution Number 2019, next in order, adopting fees for impoundment of shared on-demand motorized scooters.
I'll second that.
Ted, question, did your motion include the two items that Jeremy added?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they do.
Okay. There's a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. We'll now move on to item number 12, which is the consideration of a private collection of Marx Brothers memorabilia loan for display at the library. of Marx Brothers memorabilia loan for display at the library. And Aaron was going to handle this, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Director of the library and observatory.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council, and Mr. Hagerman. Today, I've come before you to request that the Board of Directors of the City of Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory approve the agreement accepting the loan of a private collection of the Marx memorabilia. Excuse me. Bill Marx, the son of Harpo Marx and a resident of the city, has amassed a significant private collection of Marx Brothers memorabilia that includes photographs, books, musical instruments, and many other items. Bill has generously offered access to his personal collection for the purpose of publicly displaying the items contained in the collection at the library, provided that the collection is placed on public display in a designated area at the library for a minimum of one year. That none of these items contained in the collection may be sold, donated, gifted, or otherwise disposed to anyone without prior written consent of Mr. Marx. A loan by Bill Marx's sign is prominently displayed in the library or around the vicinity of the collection, and that the city obtains at its own cost a written appraisal of the collection. David Bryant Showcase, located at the south entrance of the library, is the location in which the collection will reside during the loan period. A draft of the sign that will be prominently displayed in or next to the collection is on the screen as well. If approved by the board, library staff will work with Bill to safely transport the memorabilia in the upcoming weeks. Upon completion of the installation of the display and mutual agreement between the city and Bill Marx, a written appraisal will be completed. The Marx Brothers were an American family comedy act that was successful in vaudeville, on Broadway, and in the motion pictures from 1905 to 1949. Five of the Marx Brothers' 13 feature films were selected by the American Film Institute as among the top 100 comedy films, with two of them, Duck Soup and Night at the Opera, in the top 12. They are widely considered by critics, scholars, and fans to be among the greatest and most influential comedians of the 20th century. The city of Rancho Mirage was home to the Marx Brothers for many years. Part of the collection that would be on loan from the, from Bill Marx includes Harpo's music stand, used in many films and television shows, several great posters of their career, a painting of Harpo dressed as a matador, and Harpo's practice harp that traveled the world with him throughout his career. Additional items that will be included in the display will be memorabilia of when Harpo was on the I Love Lucy Show, a replica horn of Harpo's signature, uh, signature horn, I'm sorry, Harpo's wig, original paintings from Harpo, and hopefully in the near future, the jacket that you see in the middle, which is on loan to another museum, will quickly join the display as well. To ensure the display is a true representation of the Marx Brothers' career, we will include original posters, contracts, and books either written by or about the Marx Brothers. Our goal is to not only create a display for those who are too young to, and, and who inquire about who the Marx Brothers were, but also to bring a smile to those who are young at heart and remember watching the Marx Brothers on the big or small screen. The display will be sure to catch the eye of the approximately 800 patrons we serve each day. I appreciate your consideration, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. For those of us who had an opportunity to go to the House and review some of these very great pieces, there are so many, it's hard to choose just a few to go in this case. And hopefully, over a period of time, if there becomes a real strong liking of this type of exhibit, we could expand it in the future. And I think they have a long-range plan to do that. But it's a great, great opportunity for the city and for the library to have a new display, much like our other displays that we brought to the library. So, the Marx Brothers are part of Rancho Mirage, and this is a great opportunity for us to acknowledge some of that. Any other comments?
I do have a comment, I have a question. In the display case, is it all there in one shot, or is it rotating?
The current display will be one shot, and then as we feel necessary, we will work with Bill on bringing in new content. But as you saw on the screen, the David Bryant Showcase is a sizable screen, or section, but there's also some toy, or not toy chest, prop chests, there's some knives, there's roller skates, there's a lot of different props that they used throughout their career that Bill has in his collection. So I do see it being an evolving display over the year and loan period.
All right, Aaron, also, is there a timeline on this being with us in the library? I.e., when he passes away, what happens? Can you know?
If the, if he were to happen to pass in the one-year loan period, which we hope that wouldn't happen, then it would go to their, the heirs, the legal heirs of Mr. Marx. So this is a one-year loan for this current display.
And then after that, if they wish, they can continue keeping it with us, right?
I believe that's an agreement that we would have to come to, back to the council for a longer loan period, but this is for one year to be displayed in our library.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Anybody in the audience would like to speak on this item? All right? I hear clapping in the back? That's good. We need a motion, please.
All right, I will make that motion to the Board of Directors of the City of Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory approve the attached agreement accepting a loan of private collection of Marx Brothers memorabilia, and authorize a library director to execute the same subject to finalization by the city attorney.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Aaron, when would you anticipate this program or the display would go up?
Once it's approved, I've talked with Bill, and hopefully we'll get over there next week, if it's approved by the council.
Okay, that's great. There's a motion on the floor, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we will now move on to closed session. Steve, what's the matter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Just to you, before you start, Aaron, as long as you're there, I did not have the opportunity to attend the Riders Festival, but I did go online, and I was asking him before we started. I have never seen such a fantastic installation on something that you just, I, I am binge-watching this, and I asked Aaron, what are the hits on this? Why don't you tell them what we talked about?
Since the inception of us recording the talks and putting them on YouTube, we just surmount, or surpassed the 1 million view mark for all of our videos total combined. We do have a few that are about 200,000 to 300,000, and then we have some that are a little less, but combined total, we've reached our million total viewers.
Well, and again, what you all do, your staff, along with Jamie, it's unbelievable what is put forward, and especially when you see it on that internet and its fullness, and you can just go and peruse through it at your leisure, it is amazing, it is amazing.
Aaron, if you would, would you let the audience know how they can go ahead and, and watch it, how they can see it on their computer and so forth?
Absolutely. So there's two different ways. You can go onto the Rancho Mirage Riders Festival website, and there's a tab up top that says Videos, and it'll link you to all the videos. Or if you have access to YouTube on your apps, you can just click on Rancho Mirage Riders Festival on your apps, and all of our videos will come up as well.
That's great, and I agree, Charlie, it's, you can get hooked on that very easily and, and become very enamored.
Ted, thank you for that, and for dovetailing on how to get a hold of it. I, I'm telling you, Robert and I, we, we just can't stop watching it, it's amazing. Thank you, thanks, everybody.
It's a lot better in person.
That's true, too.
The city council is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding one significant exposure to litigation item, one potential initiation of litigation item, and the following two cases, Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage, and New Singular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Rancho Mirage. It may be a short closed session.
Steve, does that include the item we added?
Yes.
Okay.
And move on to recess, the closed session.